I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Our dear gracious holy Father, we come to you tonight and thank you for this time to come and do the business of this great city of Cartersville. We ask that you go before us, that you give us wisdom in the decisions made, and we thank you for this, the beautiful weather we had today as we look forward to spring and the newness of life that it brings. And we give you the praise of the Lord for all that's done. And so you know, good prayer.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we have justice for all.
Ms. Drake, roll, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2. Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Rand, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our February the 18th meeting. And council, you've had these given to you a few days ago and had an opportunity to review them for accuracy. Now would be the time to make any edits to those minutes, and if there are none, then a motion to approve would be in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. You want to start this off?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Appreciate that. Yes, Mayor and council, I'd like to recommend Sidney Forsyth as the Water and Sewer Superintendent. Sidney's been with us since December of 1997, and at this point in time, I hope the city council would agree with me that Sidney's a well-informed employee, he's well-rounded, and he's ready to take forward and take on the water superintendent position.
Thank you. Does that require a motion in a second?
Chad, you should add it to the agenda, and then yes, you actually do need to make a motion in a second.
So I need a motion to add this item to the agenda that we're talking about. Thank you, Chad.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item's added to the agenda that Mr. Porter just told us about. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And I give it a hearty aye as well. Ms. Drake, if you would do the honors of swearing in Mr. Forsyth for us.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, of the state and of the state of Georgia, and that you will in all respect observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of office of all you guys?
I will. Thank you. Thank you. I promise I won't hold you long. I don't know if you read my resume or not, but water's all I've done for 32 years now in some form or fashion, whether Navy or in the municipal water industry. So this is kind of something I've looked forward to and worked for. And to be honest with you, I interviewed for the job seven years ago. When Sam called me and told me that Bob Jones got the job, I couldn't even bring myself to be disappointed. Because I knew that I'd be treated well, and the city and the water department would be in good hands. And now I just hope to deport myself with the same integrity and honesty and meekness that Bob did. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Sidney. Our first item tonight is AZ 21-01. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Directly related to this one is the following case, AZ 21-02. So my discussion will probably be on both of them. The applicant, or the representative for both cases, is Mr. Chad Hollander. He owns the property listed on the second application. His neighbor owns the property listed on this first one, 24 Lake Cove. They are looking to annex into the city. The representative is looking to have his school age children in the city school system. With that, there were some concerning comments from those reviewing the application during the process, and with that, the planning commission did recommend denial of this application. Since the first reading, there has been some emails and some discussions, but there have been no additions or changes since the first reading. So the planning commission did recommend denial of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Menino at this point on this application or on this issue? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of the request, AZ 21-01, and ask anyone who wishes to to step forward and speak for or against. And when doing so, please your name and address for our clerk.
Chad Hollander, 16 Royal Lake Cove, Cartersville, Georgia 30120. So I pleaded my case to y'all last time, and then just found out a couple, you know, a little bit more in between shortly after that meeting. One of those pictures, I think, shows it better. I said that I had measured the distance between my property and the Carter Grove property that was on the other side of the golf course, and that was three quarters of a mile. But that picture right there actually shows, I think, the seven lots that are kind of at the end of the golf course, and, you know, that's a half a mile from my house. And then the inset, this up here.
Yeah, feel free to walk over to there.
And so this lot was annexed in, right, in my neighborhood, and then these are one half mile from my house. So I don't understand the police and fire concerns, right? I mean, if a fire truck was coming, they would come past my house to get to any of these trash service and all that stuff. I just kind of wanted to point out that, you know, when I was saying how close we were and all that stuff, it was over here, I didn't even really think about all these lots and houses already being in the city limits. With that, and that, and this lot here that was annexed in, you can't see the spread behind the numbers, I mean, it just seems like, you know, lots in my neighborhood have already been annexed in. So as far as the police and fire concerns and all that stuff, I just, you know, hopefully that kind of puts some of that stuff to rest. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Hollander.
Is there a house up there on that one little lot that comes out? Is that where, that's an empty lot?
I think it is an empty lot, yes.
Yeah. And do you, and I think the other lot that was annexed up there that you were speaking of behind the numbers, do you know when that was annexed in?
I do not know. I do not know.
2012.
2012.
Ms. Hollander, I think one of the biggest concerns is part of that road coming into the course is private, or a portion of it is private. I think it's, what is it, that, what does that say? Belmont Drive?
Yeah.
I think that's probably their biggest concern. If they close that road, which you think they're closing it before.
Well, if you, you mean like a fire truck or something? I mean, if a fire truck was going to come to those houses at the golf course, there's no way they would come all the way through Carter Grove to get to those houses. It would be so much longer than coming up 61 and turning left for any type of emergency. You know, they would be going up the hill and through and around the back and all that stuff through that back entrance of Carter Grove, so I can't imagine they would go that way. But...
Okay. Any other questions at this time?
Your kids are currently in the city schools, correct?
One is, that one. And then our daughter starts 6th grade, so if we don't get annexed, we'll be applying to get her in out of district as well. And then my neighbor, you know, they're in their 60s. Both of their kids went to the city schools all through out of district, so they don't have any kids and no plans of having more.
Any other questions for Mr. Hollander? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Again, this is a public hearing for the zoning portion of the request AZ 21-01, and if anybody wishes to step forward and speak, now is the time to do it. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the zoning portion of the request and open up the public hearing for the annexation portion of the request AZ 21-01.
Mayor, if I could suggest we just incorporate the previous comments in here?
I was about to ask you if that would be appropriate.
It is.
Since a lot of those were. Thank you. And so we will incorporate those comments into this portion of the request as well, Mr. Hollander. And if there are anybody else who wishes to step forward and speak for or against, now would be the time to do so. And seeing none, I will close the annexation portion of the request AZ 21-01, and I will turn it over to council for further discussion before we vote. It would be on the annexation portion of this request. The annexation of application AZ 21-01. Is there any discussion?
Legally, since we already have all these other places annexed in, and they are city limits, we're servicing part of that. We put that into our service circle, so to speak.
When we annex a piece of property, all city services are available to it.
So currently, we already have city services in those places that are annexed, correct?
Correct.
Just as a point of clarification, that includes fire, police, garbage. I believe that's a Georgia power service area.
Actually, it's Greystone, I believe.
Okay, so it's Greystone. So there are some certain, that part wouldn't change.
Right.
But your point is still taken. I just wanted to make sure.
And I think it is county water. And county water, and then private sewer.
Yeah, I don't think there's any gas out there, correct?
Not that far.
Is there any of the roads that can they be traversed by fire trucks, roads trucks? Are there any logistical issues with those vehicles?
Councilman Fox, who are you asking that?
I guess I'm asking Randy. None that were identified that I've accounted for. Is Tommy back there? They are county roads, and even if this gets annexed, they will remain county roads if the property is in the rear. As far as the city being able to get access with fire trucks, cars, trucks.
We would have the same access that the county currently has for any of their services to the property.
I guess I would do that, is can they get in there, then can they get turned around? It's a neighborhood, it's all paved with cul-de-sacs, and, you know, our house is on a cul-de-sac there. There's nothing that would limit vehicles. City's aware of that down there.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of, though I don't know the radiuses of the cul-de-sac and whether they're sufficient for our fire trucks without them going off the road or not.
Did they have any negative comments on the third report, Randy, you recall them?
The fire did investigate, they could not get a pressure from the county, just even the term of water pressure is the difference. There was concern about a little pressure out there, but they had no requests that the county has done. The city goes out on an annual basis to do parts of the building.
Any further discussion or questions?
The, and the county came back also, right, came back as not in favor of it, along with the planning commission.
Yeah, there was, an email came in, I believe, with statements of concern.
Yeah, that was included in the package as well. They're turning about annexing that in.
There's no other discussion?
No question.
Yes, sir.
To the gentleman.
Mr. Hollander, do you mind stepping forward to the microphone? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you think is any more residents in your neighborhood that might want to be enjoined in the city?
I know there is.
Then, would it be better to come as a group instead of one by one or one?
Well, you know, originally, when I started this, I was told, oh, yeah, that's, you know, no big deal. Basically, you say you want to get annexed, they're, you know, you're going to charge you more tax, it's no problem. So, you know, knowing what I know now, maybe I would have tried to round up some other people, but when I submitted the application and all that stuff, it was kind of like, yeah, the city's always looking to annex good residents. So I didn't realize there would be, you know, a hangup. But I think, you know, us being in does open it up to other people. There's a house, you know, right on the corner of Summit Ridge Drive and our road, that their kids, both are out of district and pay the tuition and all that stuff. So I know there's other houses there that would like to be in the city.
Have you been approached by any of those?
Have I been approached by them? No. No, and I didn't approach, you know, I didn't approach them for this, again, because I didn't think, you know, I would need to. But it's not like dirt roads or any of that. It's a subdivision, you know, it's all paved and there's, I mean, the garbage truck comes through to get my garbage now, so. And then one of the neighbors over there's had some health issues and had fire trucks at his house, so I don't see there being a problem with any of that stuff.
Which garbage truck comes through?
Waste man, what was, waste management?
Oh, yeah, a private.
Yes, yeah. So, I mean, I would much rather pay the city, so would my neighbor. So...
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions or discussions or comments?
Just to note, Councilman Roth, on page 16 of your package is where the county's comments were, since you referenced.
I did reference those. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? If there is none, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning and annexation.
Well, we're voting only on the annexation into the city at this point, so.
On the annexation into the city.
So I have a motion in favor of annexation. And I have a second. All in favor to raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, council will take up the issue of zoning on that property, and chair will entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve the zoning as well.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. That was your left hand, Calvin, but we're going to go with that. I'm sorry. Sorry to get specific on that.
It says on the right, it's the same thing.
It's one of them.
The right mind.
That's right, the right mind. All right, we will now move on to the next application, which is AZ 21-02.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. As I noted, this application depended directly on the previous application. I'd like to carry my comments forward from the previous application.
Thank you.
On this one also.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for AZ 21-02, and anybody wishing to step forward may do so at this time. Would it be appropriate to allow the comments that were made earlier to apply on this public hearing relative to that?
Yes, and this would be the zoning.
We are speaking of the zoning portion of the application. That is, of course, Mr. Hollander, would you like your comments from before to apply on this one as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step forward may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the zoning portion of the request and open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of AZ 21-02, and ask anyone to step forward if they choose to make comment. And again, I will carry Mr. Hollander's comments for the record forward on that as well, if you desire, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step on the, speak on the item, may step forward and do so at this time? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing on the annexation portion of 21, excuse me, AZ 21-02. Turn it over to council for discussion or motions on the annexation portion of AZ 21-02.
Make a motion to approve the annexation of AZ 21-02.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Now the zoning portion of that same request.
Make a motion to approve for zoning.
All in favor, raise your hand and indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you have a second reading of our impound fees.
Yes, Mayor, as I explained at the last meeting, the county is going up at the, on the animal control impound fees, and since they do all the, hold all the animals for the city, we need to go up on our rates. We're matching their rates, and they are to be effective on March 10th. It is recommended for your approval by staff.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a DDA member to appoint. Ms. Reed, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a recommendation for appointment of Justin Owen to fill the remainder of a vacant term on the DDA board, and the board does recommend approval.
Okay. Did you mention the person who that is?
Justin Owen. I think I did, but if not, Justin Owen.
All right. And your board has, this is the board recommendation for your appointment.
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions, and if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously of the next item, please.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution for creation of a festival zone. This is to allow for off-site alcohol sales during a event rental in Friendship Plaza on April 24th, which is a Saturday.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not a motion, well, before we do that, I do want to just comment, we talked in work session with the now in place downtown walk-around entertainment district. This does change, there's a few things within the festival zone that need to get cleaned up slash clarified, or make sure that we put rules in place that make sense, that are also easy to apply. And so I just want to let council know, if you weren't at work session, that there will be some work coming back before us, before this planned event on April 24th, to clean up some of those items that, or clarify some of those items that need to be addressed prior to this date. And that will require two separate readings, and we will be scheduled to do exactly that. That being said, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Mr. Sanders, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We would like permission for the mayor to sign a consultant services agreement with Atlas Consulting to assist the city in implementation of a quiet zone for downtown. This would be, we're seeking permission to, for not to exceed $12,000, and this item would be paid for through the 2020s plus.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions for Tommy at this time? Thank you very much. How long do you, how long does this consultation, or would you anticipate this process taking between the consulting and doing the work that needs to be done and the eventual implementation?
There's a schedule in their packet, and it lists by the month, and I added up all the months. If my math is correct, it's about two and a half years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
We've got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, you have the next two, believe?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Up here on the Cass White Road, there is going to be some developing going on. The KOA campground has sold, I'll pay attention to that. This was just for something else.
You want to start over?
No, no.
I'm good. I've got some water up here, you okay?
It might be something stronger. Now, there, the KOA campground is sold, and the property across the street there, the road, highway, it's on Carson Loop, is also doing the development. So we're going to be entering into a contract or a development agreement with both of those groups. But in order to get this going, we need to have an encroachment agreement with Georgia Power Company in order to lay our lines. So these, both of these contracts are for that. So I'm asking y'all to approve these two contracts with Georgia Power. This is normal stuff with them, really.
So chair will entertain a motion for the encroachment agreement on Cass White Road, or can I loop these two together, Keith, or do they have to be separate?
They can be looped together.
Since they're similar in nature and kind of connected, let's, I'll entertain a motion if council so desires to approve both those encroachment agreements.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both pass unanimously. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Porter, you're up next.
Yes, Mayor. The first item is advanced metering program, task order 1.2A. UMS has been a consultant along the way on this process for the AMI system. Is, this is the next task order in this process. This part of their phase is $135,480, which will be paid for between our electric, gas, and water utilities, and I recommend approval of this.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is the quarterly invoice from Motorola for the countywide radio system that is used by police, fire, fibercom, gas, electric, public works and recreations. Recommended approval of this, $31,466.55.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Keep going, Dan.
Yes, sir. New World, 2021 maintenance, annual maintenance on the New World software that's used by police and fire at a cost to us of $40,534.63 for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Dan.
Yes, Mayor. The Parks and Rec has gutted the Goodyear Clubhouse, and it comes to a point with having experience on board to help us navigate through the work that needs to be done. There's lead-based paint removal is the next step in the process. We're going to have to put a new AC unit in there, get some other trades in there to finish this work. Recommend to hire McQuarrie-Goss General Contractors to be a program manager to help us do this process, and it's recommended for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forsyth, step forward, please, sir. Tell us what you got.
I'd make two apologies before I start. First of all, in my comments, I failed to mention that my support system is here. This is my wife, Chris. I'm sorry, I failed to mention.
Welcome, Chris. We all noticed you were here, even though he forgot.
I'm sorry. The other apology is, in your packet, it has the wrong Kenworth memo and quote, so I want to make sure that everyone has the correct one. This is the same Kenworth road tractor that you approved repair for at the last council meeting for $10,000. Upon opening up the engine there, it was determined that it needed an entire engine rebuild, and that is an increase of $13,694.15 over the originally approved amount. I recommend your approval for that.
Keith, do we need to approve the 13, or do we just need to approve the 24? How does that? We approved 10 when we thought it was going to be a rebuild. Now they've got a, they're repaired. Now with the rebuild, it's 23. Do we need to authorize the additional or the entire amount? Do we need to authorize the additional or the entire amount?
Either.
Y'all go ahead and dig a stab at it.
I would like to make the motion that we accept the amended proposal.
Very well done.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Sidney, you've got the next one as well.
Yes, sir. Enjoy the picture of the screw pump while I speak here.
That's right.
This is a replacement, a lower bearing for our secondary number one screw pump. It's failing and is in need of replacement, and you'll notice in the quote there, in the bid, there are several prices. This is the highest one because the entire base and bearing itself needs to be replaced for twenty thousand five hundred dollars, and it's a sole source item from the screw pump manufacturer. Recommend approval.
How long will it take us to get that on site?
It is approximately six weeks.
That's the cleanest you're going to find it.
Yeah.
Get it on the ground.
All right. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. We have an item to add to the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Don't move. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added. Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, we received a claim from Motlaken Associates regarding an accident that happened at the Senior Aquatic Center. It is recommended by staff that you deny it at this time and turn the matter over to the insurance company.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have some items on the table we're taking off the table tonight. We don't need a motion to take them off because they were scheduled to be off the table. Is that a correct statement?
They are still on the table, so you do need to take a motion off.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Chair will entertain a motion to take the items off the table.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Items are off the table and on our plate. Mr. Manino.
Thank you, mayor and council. Both of these items are directly related, like the other two applications, Z twenty oh three and AZ twenty oh four. They date back to last summer. This will be a second reading. It's a proposed rezoning of approximately seventeen-plus acres from general commercial to the MF fourteen. The applicant is looking to put approximately two hundred residential units, five buildings clustered around the pool and courtyard area adjacent to the Super Kroger out there on Main Street Marketplace. I did anticipate Mr. Ledbetter or his engineer to be here. I'm not.
Not sure what.
Not quite sure what happened.
Yeah, I don't either. They were sending emails all week, so I assumed they'd be here.
But with that, we... You know, planning commission did recommend approval of this application. We did go through a first reading, and based on questions that needed to be answered and some clarity regarding the TAD, because it does involve so many entities, that's why it was continually tabled. But with that, those things have been worked out, and again, planning commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. Before we do the public hearing part, I do want to remind council, and also, I think it's important for the public to know that when Ledbetter approached the city and the county and the school system about altering the TAD for this piece of property, changing it essentially from commercial to multifamily, the one thing that was important to all three, that being the city, the city school system, and the county, is that anybody who comes forward with a multifamily project be treated equally. And so what's been being worked on since this was tabled the first time was structuring the alteration of that TAD so that there is no TAD benefit to this particular project should council decide to move forward with it. It was important for all three entities to not issue what would look like an incentive for this type of project because that would put them on an unfair advantage versus other people that were trying to do the same thing. So Mr. Porter ran the numbers, and I don't know, Mr. Lovell has looked at it thoroughly, and all the entities have agreed that this does meet that standard, that there will be no tax, TAD incentive or benefit by the applicant in building this product. So if, again, if council decides to allow this to happen. And so that's what's been being worked on. I know a lot of people spent a lot of time on it, so thank you to all of you that have, and both the county and the school system are in agreement with the proposed terms of that. So that being said, now we'll open up a public hearing relative to the zoning portion of the request AZ twenty dash zero four and ask anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion of the hearing and open up the annexation portion of AZ twenty dash zero four. And again, anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for AZ twenty dash zero four and turn it over to council for consideration of the annexation portion of this request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now council for the zoning portion of AZ twenty dash zero four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started on Z twenty dash zero three.
Yes, thank you again, mayor and council. All my comments from the previous request were discussed as part of that one. The previous request was just a small portion of the detention pond that was being added to this actual application here, so most of my discussion did refer to this application. With that, planning commission did recommend approval, and there are no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. And again, this is Z twenty dash zero three, and I will open up a public hearing for that zoning request. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. Seeing none, I will close the zoning portion of Z twenty dash zero three and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Pretty good. I will only mention then, council, you guys have gotten an envelope on your desk, and as spring draws near, I know the folks at Cartersville Little League were kind enough to give us an invitation to their opening day festivities, which is going to be held